Derek's on his way, he'll be here shortly. So, call them, this is a special meeting of the Board of Finance and glad everybody could adjust their schedules to be here for this evening. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, there's one order of business that's not on the agenda that we wanted to take care of right away, which is to be sure that we have an opportunity to thank Mr. Shawn Kimball. Not quite his last meeting, but we wanted to just recognize him in a way that is appropriate for the great service he's done. Actually, one of Shawn's duties usually is to take care of things like this and make sure that we have the appropriate gifts, representations for him. So, on behalf of the Board of Finance, we'd like to recognize your service to us, Shawn, and offer you this memento of the town, alright? Oh, and a card.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And don't forget where we are. We may be calling on you frequently.
Congratulations.
Very much.
We wish you the best.
Hang them in your Cheshire office so that they know that we're a prettier town than them.
Yeah, forward your phone calls. So, we thank you very, very much for that. Let's be, look, the first agenda item is the approval of minutes from our meeting on March 13th. Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Appreciate the format in which they were presented, I thought they were accurate. So, I need a motion to adopt the minutes as presented.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Alright. We have an issue that we need to take care of relative to the Water Pollution Control Association, so is someone presenting this, or, huh?
Turn it over. If you don't want to.
We've all been briefed on this, but I just think for the record, we should...
Yeah, so for the record, there's a boiler that failed in the water pollution control facility. The WPCA requested supplemental appropriation from their own reserves, the WPCA reserves, under the charter, all supplemental appropriations, be it general fund or otherwise, come before the board of selectmen and the board of finance. So, they recommended to the board of selectmen, who advanced the recommendation now on to the board of finance, you understand, so...
Noted in the materials provided, this doesn't impact any of the operating budgets, it impacts the fund balance of the WPCA and as such, it does require our action. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the appropriation as outlined in the materials provided.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved and passed. Alright, so that brings us to the main event. We're delighted to have Eric Wellman here today to present the board of selectmen's pledge along with a cast of luminaries. Alright.
Well, thank you, and I want to thank board members for your flexibility in rescheduling for tonight, really appreciate that. Myself and selectmen Asker and I will be tag teaming this presentation and then there will be plenty of time for questions. We've purposely kept this a little bit short so that we could have really more dialogue at the end. So, just at a high level, we're presenting to you a nearly $21 million operating budget, which does not include the cash for capital or the debt service. That is an increase of 4.36 percent, which will go into the drivers of that increase on the next slide. It also does not include the two and a half million dollar contingency that was in last year's budget. But I really wanted to give you a picture of the drivers of what makes up that 4.36 percent. You can see along the bottom of your screen, those are the buckets and the dollar amount, and we've got a little bit more context about what's in each of those. So, you can see that just with contractual salary increases, that is the majority of the 1.75 right there, of $271,000. That also includes $26,000, I'm sorry, a $25,000 upgrade to the library position, which was really necessary in order to be able to successfully recruit and staff for that position. That's something we could talk about a little bit more if you have questions. Under employee benefits, you can see about $70,000 is made up of health insurance, social security comprises about $15,000, and then pension costs about $40,000. Under items that were returned to the operating budget, I bolded Town Aid Road because $127,000 was something that was removed last year from the operating budget. The intention was always to add it back to operating, so we ask respectfully, as you think about, you know, what is, you know, driving this budget above 1.75, that that amount not be counted against us, because the intention again was always to return that money. Utilities, so under utilities and contractual obligations, the contractual increases are on the IT side of about $25,000. Ambulance service is something that we bolded, I know this is an issue that you're aware of, and it's something that I'll touch on a little bit more depth on the next slide. We also restored $5,000 that had been cut from the previous budget for the visitor's center. And then $35,000, which is a partial restoration of paving funds. And then social services is something, again, that I'll touch on on the next slide. $78,000 for a social worker position. That $6,000 is a one-time licensing cost, and then the addition of a $7,000 lunch for the senior center, a cafe-style lunch. What I want to emphasize as we look at these drivers is that the only one that I feel is a genuine service increase is the $7,000 for the cafe-style lunch. The others, we feel, are necessary to meet the needs of a growing and in some cases more stressed population. We've got some data that I'll share a little bit later in this presentation. So, just a glance as it pertains to the board of finance guidance. So, our budget is 2.6 points above your guidance, which is a difference of a little over, about $525,000. When you remove the ambulance and the town aid road, that gets us closer, about 1.5 percent above, or about a difference of about $318,000. I wanted to add a little bit of commentary, though, around the ambulance. So, that's obviously an issue that this board is aware of. It's a, it's an issue that I would say that the board of selectmen is concerned about and something that we want to further evaluate over the next year, looking at things like the governance structure, revenue recovery. Basically, if we're going to be in a position to be routinely subsidizing their operations, I think that a higher level of scrutiny is necessary, and it's something that I'm committed to before we were to potentially come before this board again next year with another, you know, with additional funding for that organization. It's a service that they currently provide at a high level. It's a service that needs to be provided, and that $80,000 is, you know, something that this board feels is the right thing to do. I also wanted to touch on some statistics related to the social worker position. Our social services director has seen 79 people in face-to-face appointments over the last year. Those don't include drop-ins or phone calls. They've taken 119 applications for the renters rebate program, 184 applications for energy assistance. 62 people were provided with choices counseling last year, which is something we currently outsource. If we had that social worker position, it would be brought in-house, and we believe that it would be offered at a higher level of service. And 19 cases in the past year were handled by the juvenile review board. That compares to an average of seven in previous years, so that speaks to some of the growing need in this community. So, having a social worker on staff would allow us to provide case management services, so those ongoing services which we're currently unable to provide. Maria's vision for this position is that Kristin, our current director, would remain a working supervisor, but be able to focus more strategically on combating some of the more pressing issues, opioids, vaping, and, you know, of course, managing the needs of what is a growing aging population. Also, I'll point out that towns that we compare ourselves to, so Glastonbury, Cheshire, and others, have not just one full-time social worker, but multiple social workers. So, this is, again, we really see this as something that we need to do to keep up with the growing needs of our population, not a service enhancement. With that, I'll turn it over to Shawn.
Good to see everybody from this side. So, we're going to talk briefly about the Capital and Non-Recurring Fund first, and then our capital projects. If there's specific questions, I'm happy with the help of town staff to go into as much detail as you all want on this. But as you know, our Capital Non-Recurring Fund is the fund that we use, and it's paid back through the operating budget, so the $83,250 is the number that we've traditionally been using for the last few years. And again, you'll see the projects that typically have fit under this, trying to keep the items, as we've looked at, under $100,000 is what we've seen as the capital non-recurring items that make the most sense. Anybody that's been to Eno recently knows that the back stairwell along the parking lot against the handicap spaces are in dire need of repair, and that's something that we think is very much a high priority. The main piece of equipment that is able to service our Main Street, from a plowing standpoint, the sidewalks and not the roadway, the attachment breaks down much more quickly than the actual John Deere itself does, based on usage and salt and just, again, usage there, so that's an item. We need to continue to maintain our dump truck fleet, so we need an additional dump truck, and I'll note that this is not half a dump truck, this is actually the whole thing. So, we've done that before. The library children's room computers are actually, and Lisa correct me if I'm wrong, they're the library computers that we put in when we redid the library. And as you know, technology changes on a pretty rapid basis, those computers are long since in need of replacement, and we think that that's something we'd like to put this capital towards. Simsbury Farms, as we talked about in prior years, is in need of a complete redo, an upgrade to the irrigation system, so you'll see that in the larger capital plan in the out years. But as part of that is to do it effectively and to do it with the best usage of funds in time, we need to do the study to get the mapping of the water sources and make sure that we're doing that appropriately. The ice resurfacer for Simsbury Farms is from 1997, and Jerry correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the equivalent of several hundred thousand miles on a vehicle, so Jerry really does get as many miles as possible out of it. And I'll have you know that that's also a, not a new piece of equipment, we're going to buy a used piece of equipment again, so that has actually a lower rate. Front-end mower, same story, Jerry's team does a great job of giving every last mile and blade of grass out of his equipment, and it is time to purchase a new front-end rotary mower. Something that you see in our plan every year is the regular rotation of the purchase of police cars, again, consistent with prior practice. Something might be newer for you is the AEDs. Again, these are not the AEDs in the buildings, these are the AEDs in the patrol vehicles. They have a life to them, and they are at or beyond that life, so these are items that are with the officers every time they're going out to a call, and the chief can speak to the usage, but they're unfortunately, but fortunately, used to save folks' lives, and we're in need of replacing those and adding one more to another vehicle. And then, coming down the road, is a need to revisit our entire radio system within the police department. We've got some pretty substantial challenges with communication in this town, as you know from topography, and we all experience the cell phone services under 10 here. The police department has had some challenges in different spots, and as that radio system ages, we need to put some money towards the study, and there, we'll talk about later a larger capital item that is coming in the out years to actually purchase that upgraded or new radio system. So, that totals our 416-250 number, which fits within that $83,250 payback that we've traditionally used out of the operating budget. Any questions on that, that makes sense? Lisa?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Nice to be on this side of the table.
I promised you'd be nice to me.
I will be nice to you. Just a couple of things that struck me. Capital and non-recurring fund is for capital, and the feasibility study is not technically capital. Are you proposing to pay it back over five years? Is that a five-year payback there?
It is.
And the $7,200 is obviously under the $10,000 threshold.
Yep.
So, the thinking there was just, that's a good place to put it?
Was, it's, I mean, it's, you're right, it is under the $10,000, but it's a capital item, it's attached to an item that's not a regular usage.
Close.
How is the Eno Hall stairway and railings, why is that not in capital?
I mean, it is a capital item, it's not a large enough item where we would bond it. I mean, you know, technically, could we move it to the cash for capital discussion? We could, but as we looked at this whole budget and we put the whole plan together, as you know, there's three ways that we can pay for things, in our operating budget, in the CNR budget, in the overall capital budget, and as we looked at the whole picture, this is candidly where it fit in.
And Shawn, when you, did you work back to the $416,000 number, or is, was, do we look at all of them? Maybe the discussion around the $176,500 that would otherwise have been on this and how that's being treated would be appropriate at this point, too.
Shawn, you want to speak to that? Do you want to start? You want to keep going through those, and we can get to that together?
Yeah, because I have questions about that. I didn't preface any of this because I wanted to let you guys make your presentation, but this is one of the big issues for me and discussing among members of our board, is really trying to be clear about what is and isn't a capital item. And when we use cash for capital, are we offsetting an operating expense, or are we prepaying a capital expense that won't then be bonded? And, you know, I, the whole idea of the capital non-recurring was put in place before I got here, and I know...
Before any of us got here.
I think so, Maura, and it was...
Right around that time.
Right around that time. And so, I've had discussions with Shawn about this over the last couple of years, where, you know, we now have $416,250 that we spend every year, and it hits the operating budget by dividing it by five, so it feels better. It's only $83,000, except that we also have the $83,000 from four years ago, from three years ago, two years ago, and last year. Amazingly adds up to $416,000. So, it's, you know, it was a, it was worthwhile because it actually changed behavior in the desired way. So, we no longer now try to make the operating budget by deferring a capital item that would otherwise have hurt the operating budget.
Right.
And I guess, anecdotally, we found ourselves in buying 11 buses one year when, you know, time caught up with us. So, I'm not suggesting we don't do that, but that's why I want to get on to the other, there's a couple of other places where we're paying, you know, and inevitably, roads is a great example of, there are at least three different places that money comes from, that we use to pay for the roads, and we don't ever disaggregate that and show what we're paying for roads, and is that the right amount, and are these the right places for the money to come from? So, I'd like to try to at least talk about those things tonight, as we look at what our collective response is to the combined budgets that we're going to have to recommend to the public hearing and then ultimately to the taxpayers.
Absolutely. And it's a fair question, and Lisa and Maura have spent years sitting with me up there talking about that, because we've had the same discussions of what is truly capital, what is capital non-recurring, what should be operating, and, you know, the challenge is absent a clear definition or a policy, we often interpret it, so, you know...
Alright, so...
It's incumbent on us to give you that clear definition and policy.
Right, yeah, exactly.
You know, and as I said, it's, you know, it's, I'm not suggesting that there's a right or wrong way to do it, but, you know, philosophically, there are, again, from our side, there are three ways to pay for things, and as we look at our needs in totality, we do try to make sure that that fits within it, so that we're staying, you know, within your policies, your guidelines, and impacting the residents in a way to maintain our services, so...
Okay, so what, we may come back to that slide, but this is, this is, I knew this slide was next.
This is the exciting one, I like this one. Thankfully, we split this out from our original, because we had it all lumped together, and that was confusing for me. So, these are the items funded through a one-time cash for capital. So, in lieu of bonds, instead of CNR, we're asking that cash out of next year's capital account be appropriated for these. Revaluation, as you know, is something that comes along every five years. We did not put any money towards this last year. It's something that, again, we can certainly have a discussion with you folks on, but whether we fund it one-fifth, one-quarter, we fund it all at once when it comes up, is something that we have to pay for. And at this point, our best estimation of what it will cost is about $61,500 times four. The economic development study is something that the board of selectmen and Maria feel strongly about. When we brought Maria on, it was one of the main drivers that we talked to her about in terms of our priorities, and candidly, we don't have the study in mind at this point, but we know that when we reconstitute the Economic Development Commission later this year, we are confident that we're going to be coming to you, asking you for funding to keep and continue that going, so we felt in the interest of transparency, we would ask for it upfront in the operating, or in the capital budget.
Yeah, so I would stop you right there and just say, so, it's a one-time study, it's a one-time expense, why is that not an operating expense?
I could make the argument that operating should be for reoccurring expenses like salary and benefits, and we funded one-time studies through bonds previously, we funded them through cash, we did...
If they're associated with a capital asset, I can understand that, but if they're not, I don't, I wonder about that.
Okay. That's sort of been the rule that we've used before.
A feasibility study for irrigation, or for the high school, or for the Henry James Project, then that would be capitalizable, but I don't quite get that, but so, just, and I would say the same while you're going to the deep water, deep wind, deep water/wind response seems like an operating expense to me.
It could be, those are both one-time items, and again, if we put them in our budget, what are we going to spend the money on next year? Because now we have $60,000 for economic development, is that something that we're going to continue to spend every year? I don't know.
Alright, Lisa, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, so, I mean, I understand why you did it, and probably in Manchester, it's capital or non-recurring, but our policy is actually capital N, non-recurring, so it's a little different than most towns. I'm not saying we're right, we may want to adjust that policy over time, but if you put it in operating, to what Rob was saying, and then we use cash to pay for it, it won't impact you next year. It's just where do you put it, from an accounting perspective? That's not to say, I've talked with Rob and Shawn about perhaps over time, maybe we need another line item, or we add an operating line item for studies, because it seems to happen every year. It's every year, and it's not really capital, so I understand why you put it there. We always put it in capital, didn't bond for it, but you paid cash for it, so it's where do you put it? So, it's totally logical that you did that, it's not crazy by any means, and perhaps maybe even right, but it's not consistent with our current policy. That's not to say we shouldn't relook at it.
Yeah, so, go ahead. I would just also say, I mean, traditionally, with respect to the deep water/wind response, that usually in the past, like when we've had Meadowwood, goes into legal expenses into the operating budget.
That's not legal expenses, that's going to be the onsite monitoring.
That's the onsite monitoring?
Additional cost of our building staff's time, because there's going to be a substantial effort to have to be up there when they start putting those holes in the ground, to make sure that they're doing it appropriately following the...
I thought this was a legal expense.
That's an operating expense.
Maybe just to quickly back up to the question about the non-recurring piece of the studies.
Yeah.
So, a lot of times when you're doing technical studies, they don't fit neat and tidy into one fiscal year. So, if you're, you know, hiring a consultant, you're working through a study, you know, the RFQ process might take longer than anticipated. One advantage to having it set up as a sort of non-recurring expense within the CNR fund is that if you don't expend those funds in that fiscal year, it will roll forward to the next fiscal year, versus if a study like that is placed into operating, and again, if the project maybe falls a little behind schedule and doesn't fit tidy into that fiscal year, the remainder of that balance, you know, goes into essentially fund balance at the end of the year. So, that, I would say, is an advantage of budgeting these sort of one-time technical assistance type studies in CNR as a non-recurring expense, so that was also part of the philosophy with the studies going into CNR. And in regards to deep water/wind, it's a combination. We are hopeful that we will wrap up our legal expenses before fiscal year end, but we are not certain at this point that that will happen. And then there is another piece, which is for approximately an 18-month period, where we do anticipate during the construction phase that we will have monitoring that we will be doing. So, there may also be some additional costs along with peer review around landscaping and things of that nature as well. So, we do anticipate that there will be some expenses. Again, we're not, to be very honest, we don't know what that total amount would be, but again, we wanted to be transparent and say, we know that there will be some expenses for deep water/wind, here is an estimate, so we are, you know, coming to you later in the year saying we need a supplemental appropriation for our response to deep water.
So, I probably should know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. What is the difference between something that goes into capital and non-recurring and gets amortized over five years versus what just goes into capital?
It's how we pay for it.
What?
It's how we pay for it.
In our capital policy, so my understanding from working with Shawn is that we do have a written capital policy in place at the moment that says items of $100,000 or more will be budgeted into capital fund. So, we did use that threshold when we were looking at capital items, that capital...
So, it's not the characteristic of the item, it's its dollar amount, and those have to be approved by the taxpayers.
That policy is in desperate need.
Yes, it is, we all know that.
So, I would add two things to that. First of all, I appreciate you looking at, this doesn't fit neither policy, because it's not capital in the CNR, it's not capital of the $100,000 threshold, so, but Maria is right, if you put it in either capital or CNR, if you don't spend it all in the first year, it's still there, you don't have to reappropriate it. So, that's sort of why in the past, we put it in capital, and we've never bonded for something like that, that would have always been cash, but because we didn't have a normal accounting process for it. It's the same thing, the same concept, because they're not, I'm presuming you're not recommending you pay for these over five years, right?
No, this would be a one-time transfer of cash from capital to the CNR.
So, it's just a switch, an accounting switch from capital over there, it's the same thing. You know, Maria took the $100,000 threshold, I took, it's not capital, so I didn't put it in CNR when we did it on the board of selectmen, but it's the same concept.
Okay, so, but, just to be really clear, we are going to pay for them when they, when the bill comes due, the cash will be gone, it's how they hit our operating budget, and so, I'm talking, Maura, go ahead.
Well, it's all sort of lumped together.
Yeah.
It's a cart before the horse, but to the best of my knowledge, this is the first time we've ever had the budget presented where there's actually been a bucket called cash for capital.
Right.
Historically, how it's been done is we take a look at those items that are capital projects and/or capital non-recurring projects, and say, okay, well, it doesn't make sense to bond for these because they don't fit those things, so we're going to pull some of these out and pay for them. So, I mean, I...
Remember, this is a unique year, and Shawn can speak to this more than I can, in that there's a substantial amount of debt that fell off.
Yeah.
So, to get back to that 6.4%, 6.5%...
I don't agree with that, though. I mean...
Okay, well, the debt has been paid off, so...
Right, but it doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Right.
Correct, but remember, against some of the board of selectmen's guidance last year, this board lowered our capital number, and we do have to maintain our capital assets. And what I heard at the tribal meeting is we were potentially going back to our capital number, so...
Yeah, so, what I'm trying to figure out, one of the things that Eric said right at the beginning, in one of your very first slides, that I am, I mean, actually struck a little bell, is that, you know, we gave you guidance of an increase over last year's budget, and if the last year's budget had things that had been taken out that need to be replaced, then maybe the 175 was off the wrong number. But listening to the further conversation, what I would like to try to get away from is putting things that we need to spend money on in different places just to achieve an operating budget 175 or a capital, that seems to me to be not productive for the taxpayers, for the people that manage this budget. What we should decide is what we need and what we can afford to spend, and we should use budgeting on operating expenses that are based not just on what we spent last year and what we're obligated to spend this year because of contracts that we sign, but things that we really need to think about. Our responsibility, we view our responsibility as to look at what the boards recommend for... Our responsibility, we view our responsibility as to look at what the boards recommend for expenses and then try to have, play our role as a fiduciary to challenge that, especially areas where we think that it, you know, that we need to be more frugal or it's not appropriate. And then the second step of that is to look at how we would fund it and what would be, what would fall into categories that we could spend, we could benefit, all of us, by using the cash to pay down, pay for capital, so we have room under our debt service projection line to do bigger projects which we know are coming along the line. And then set appropriate levels of reserves, and then ultimately set what the taxpayers have to pay. We're the advocate for the taxpayers, first and foremost, and their voice in this process, and we take that responsibility very, very seriously. So there's a lot of conversation, and we should have also said at the beginning, you know, this is a unique year because we have a new form of town government. We have the budget coming from Maria, who has all of, how many, five weeks? Four weeks, all right. Giving you extra credit there. But, you know, and, you know, new first select person, so there, I mean, this was a challenging year for all of us. I just want to make sure that the dialogue tonight is constructive on how we need to move forward and try to get to what, you know, get down to things that we think we should or shouldn't be spending money on and worry less about where it is and how we do that for this meeting tonight, all right?
And that's fair. So, and again, just to back up from our side, the Board of Selectmen, all of these are our priorities based on our job to represent the taxpayers and the members of this community for their service needs. So we have made recommendations, but respectfully, we know this is not our decision of where they get funded. As we've looked at the three pieces of pie, this is potentially the ways that these items could be funded, but certainly your decision.
And I'd like to talk, I mean, where it gets funded, to me, is a little bit like rearranging the layers of the Titanic.
This is the state.
I'm not so worried about that for this year. I do agree totally with Rob that we need to have a stronger policy and an agreement, but I'm not sure that we're going to achieve that tonight. In fact, I'm sure we're not going to achieve that tonight. So we should make a commitment that we'll work with you over the coming years so that next year, we have a clear policy and, you know, everybody's happy with it. But in the meanwhile, I know you're the policy recommendation, but I'd like to understand a little better, because I don't really understand why we need to do yet another economic development study. I mean, there have been, Lisa can tick them off much more effectively than I can, but there have been lots of them done in recent years, and I just don't see that it's, you know, look at, dust those things off, get them off the shelf and read those, and there will be a plenty for you to act upon based on those. That's, you know, a pretty big chunk of change there. And I'm strongly on record on deep water-wind in many of the other hearings already. I'm really not thrilled with the notion of us fighting against an organization that wants to come in here and build something that we then get to tax that will bring in hundreds of, like something like six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, which will benefit you in the next budget year. I mean, that just to me is, you know, kind of shooting ourselves in the foot.
Agreed, but that fifty thousand is not to fight deep water-wind. That fifty thousand is to represent the individuals in this community and to make sure the concerns about water quality and soil testing are addressed. That's our obligation. And you can disagree with me if you want, but as a policy decision, the Board of Selectmen has decided to make sure that we're protecting those citizens' rights as we would anybody. Additionally, whether we want that project or not, Linda, we realize it's coming, we have an obligation to monitor that project being put in. That's an obligation of this community, whether we want it or not. We recognize it as a one, yes, but they, the two projects that were recently shut down, I believe were shut down as a result of local monitoring that then shared the information. So Deep didn't necessarily send the resources out, but the local building officials were on-site to monitor the stormwater management for those. We have that obligation. It's also not a reoccurring item. You can give me that fifty thousand in my operating budget, would love it. That means I get to spend it again next year. That's, we think it's a more responsible recognition to put it in a one-time item because it's not a reoccurring cost.
So there are no legal fees associated with that number?
I believe there are potentially. We want to be, as Maria said, we want to be transparent with what could be coming, but the appeal, or excuse me, our appeal could be settled before then, and that might, number might drop.
So there are legal fees in that number?
Small amount, I believe.
There could be. We are currently in negotiations.
Well, because he's saying it's just monitoring and then, which.
For the future, we're mostly anticipating the monitoring piece. We are currently in negotiations. Again, we're optimistic and hopeful that those negotiations will end before the end of this fiscal year, but again, we just can't be certain of that. So it's possible that there could be some legal fees that we would need to incur for the upcoming fiscal year.
We could certainly strike the number and come back to this board for supplemental appropriation if you're more comfortable with that, but this board has not looked upon supplementals favorably in the past.
Well, you said that a portion of it was allocated to the extra time that staff would have to spend out there, right?
And consultants.
So I guess that's probably more, that's probably more quantifiable than the legal fee. So what's, what's the breakout of that?
Right, so this would be for consultant time, not staff time. There are a number of experts that we would need to hire to do that work for us. This is a much smaller number than what staff initially estimated. But again, we're hopeful that we could get the work done for that, but it is possible, again, we could possibly need to come back and ask for more, but this was sort of our best estimate based on information available.
I don't want to hone in on a fifty thousand dollar item. I just want to make sure that it's clear as to what it is, because response to me indicates a level of legal response as opposed to deep water-wind, I don't know, ongoing monitoring.
And so this is where it's hard to divorce completely out where it goes.
Right.
Yeah.
From the discussion.
I agree.
Linda, I just wanted to, if I can, just respond to the fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars for the economic development study. So the idea of an economic development strategic plan came out of a recommendation from the former E D C, and and we were considering, so the Board of Selectmen at our last meeting put together a work group where we're looking at all of the work that has been done, the economic development strategic plan, among other things. And we want to understand what is the gap and is there still an E? This was built into our town manager's contract that we would be doing an economic development strategic plan, but again, only if it makes sense. We could come back to this board if you're willing, perhaps in early fall, for a supplemental appropriation, but that was our best estimate of what it would take to hire a consultant if we were to move in that direction.
I would just simply ask what the return on that investment was in those previous, you know, it's, you know, what happened as a result of those previous studies? I mean, not even numbers-wise, but just what was the result? Was there any positive economic result from those studies being done initially?
I don't recall off the top of my head, candidly. Not something I have in front of me.
It was ever measured?
I don't think it was ever measured.
So it wasn't measured, but the economic development implementation strategic plan does take all the studies and say, what were the recommendations and what is staff doing to implement them? And some of them are asset development, some of them are at the library, business resource development, some of them were with planning and zoning, updating the regs, which haven't been completed, but some things have, doing different. There's now a plan. If you're a small business, you can follow the steps, what do you need to get approved, and so there, and the community calendar was a recommendation that was implemented doing. I mean, you can argue, are these good economic development? I don't know. But these are things that were adopted by the town, and the town then took steps to implement them, and you can sort of see the list. And it's fair to relook at that list and say, is that a good thing? And then the question is, how do you test it? And that, there was no, in our studies, how to test it, so that might be a need that would be worth measuring over time that could be used, but.
We have no interest in doing another study for the sake of doing another study, but we want to start by doing an inventory of what has been done. What have we gotten for it? What are the gaps? And potentially, it would require additional expenditure. And again, this came out of a recommendation from the old E D C.
Is it a collaboration with Simsbury Main Street? Are they included in the study? Are you working side by side with them?
Again, it hasn't been fleshed out, but I think that we've got to be working with our existing economic development partners in anything we do moving forward.
Do we have? But we don't yet have the new E D C. Will you be consulting with them on that?
So we have the recommendation from the former E D C, and we need to.
But the current one hasn't been, I'm assuming they would like some input in.
Yeah, so one of the conversations at the forming the new E D C is what exactly will they be tasked with? And one of the initial thoughts is their first major task would be to shepherd an economic development strategic plan.
Let's let you guys finish your presentation.
These are all good questions, and we needed to talk to them.
So moving into the, what we believe to be the truly capital projects, so the six-year plan, our portion of it, Culture Park and Rec, we've got the expansion of the multi-use trail. This is a regional initiative, if you'll remember, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but this is the piece that connects Terriffill to Bloomfield. We already have the state grant. We are crossing our fingers that that state grant is going to stay in place and we're going to keep it. But this is our local portion of what we were already granted, and obviously Bloomfield is part of that as well. So that, again, that's the connection from Bloomfield to Terriffill to work on that section of the greenway. It is not the Terriffill to three-fifteen section at this point.
Just a point of clarification, the local portion was approved in last year's budget. This is the state. The appropriation of the state.
Oh, so it's fully grant, I'm sorry. Fully funded by the state.
Um.
Yeah.
So the greenway improvements, you saw last year, Tom and his team did an excellent job repairing some much-needed section of the greenway. We need to continue to do that as that asset ages. You know, we need to maintain the trees, the root issues, the cracking of pavement. It's a safety issue. The fence in a lot of places are in disrepair. So Tom was able to pave a significant portion of that, that trail, which gets some pretty heavy usage. From a public works standpoint, again, we have eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand of our overall one-point-six, Tom, of roadway paving management. So we're proposing that eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand of it be in the capital plan, which is consistent with prior years. I believe we've asked for a higher number in prior years. That's down. We had a good discussion with this board and others over the last few years of what level of our roads are at. And Tom is the expert, but I believe we're at the eighty-five score number, which is what we were shooting for, which is a pretty, pretty nice score to have from a state of Connecticut standpoint. Tom's team has done a good job of improving our roadways, and we're truly into the maintenance portion every, basically every fifteen, sixteen years, paving those roads and taking care of them versus the complete deconstruction and reconstruction, which is substantially more expensive. So Tom's team's done a great job with that. Sidewalk resurfacing, we continue to have a substantial need in this community to pay attention to our sidewalk network around our schools and in our neighborhoods. This is not something that we've necessarily spent a lot of funds in previously, but as Tom and his team, again, have looked at this, something that definitely needs some attention. We need to continue to replace the trucks within the public works department. And Tom, again, is the expert on the hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar truck, but we are in need of a replacement. And then it wouldn't be a budget discussion these days in Connecticut without the Emerald Ash Borer tree mitigation issue. There is, as many of you know, a substantial issue in Connecticut, and it is here in Simsbury. There are a significant volume of trees that are either dead or dying. They are in the town right-of-way. They're our responsibility to take care of. This is over and above our normal tree and trimming budget and maintenance budget. And this is, this is an item that we're probably going to see for the next few years. And so we either find a way to conquer these things or there are no more ash trees. So, which is, which is really unfortunate, but.
Particularly because you just said that it's likely to be in the budget for several years. It really belongs in operating, not capital.
We could argue that about paving, sidewalks, dump trucks. I mean, you know, again, it's a philosophical with the buckets of funding.
At the end.
If I could jump in here real quick, Sean. You do a good job in public works. We're really essentially, that number that we have in there for the three years is to essentially remove almost all of the ash trees that are living in town right-of-way. It's at the end of that three years, there are going to be no ash trees left at the current pace. The only thing that we could hope for is sometime in the very near future, something would have to come by to be effective against this invasive insect which would then allow some of the trees which are in a better state of climate to survive.
Paving the roads, I know last year and the year before, there was an initiative to, I know there was a section of West Mountain Road that was slurry-coated as opposed to fully redone. I think that that's actually the only section of town that I saw it done on. I'm not sure if there were others, but just like to see what the feedback in has been, or, you know, kind of the wear and tear as opposed to, you know, alternative ways of repair.
What I would tell you, it's the interesting thing about our pavement management program is we don't have one or two tricks for our roadways. We've looked at a number of different options. Now that we are moving into a maintenance standpoint, we did look at the slurry seal, which we did in the very short section of West Mountain. To be honest, it did not perform well. It did not perform well to the point that we did resurface it with traditional asphalt prior to the winter, and we were able to recoup the cost from that. So it was good that we did the experiment on a very small section. It was unfortunate that it didn't pan out. The technology may actually be something we apply in a light path in the future.
Thanks, Tom. Lisa?
I had a question. I assume you group these by departments, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So on Culture Parks and Rec, if you could go to project number six, which is open space planning and improvements. We, last year, we had on the capital improvement plan an expenditure of a hundred-and-fifty thousand for the current year. I see that that has dropped off, and the overall project cost has come down a hundred-and-fifty, and I know that's for the Betty Hudson Park, so I just wanted to check with you to see if you'd reduced the scope of work there. Are you not doing the Betty Hudson Park? What's the basis of that?
Sure, so anticipated construction for that project is spring of twenty nineteen, largely in part due to the timeframe we're anticipating for capital state permits. We can do the bulk of the work for that project with the allocation from the current capital year budget and the previous capital year budget. If we want to do full build-out as is designed for some of the things like ornamental planters and some of the nice extra-to-have items, that would be an additional appropriation of a hundred-and-fifty thousand. Based on our capital needs this year, I felt that sort of these basics were more of a priority. Let's get construction underway, see how things go, and then if, you know, we come back to you all for next, you know, fiscal year, next capital budget, ask you to add additional hundred-and-fifty thousand.
So it is a reduction in scope. I just want to confirm.
It would be a reduction in scope, correct.
Of a hundred-and-fifty thousand. So I just, you know, I'm going to just say my part. This was, you know, approved unanimously by a different board, supported unanimously by this board, Culture Parks and Rec, planning, conservation, zoning, looked at this, this Board of Selectmen, we had multiple public hearings on it, so when was this discussed publicly as a reduction in scope of work, Eric? Has this been discussed?
Linda, Lisa, candidly, because it's in the out year, we did not spend a lot of time on this.
So it wasn't in the out year last year, so that's why it's a change. I'm just curious.
It's in the out year at this point. As we, as you know, as we look at our capital projects every year, as we look at where the funding sources come from, we have to reprioritize and make changes, and this is what was recommended as a reprioritization and a change.
But no public discussion about the reduce? I just want the public to understand that this is a reduction in scope of work, because there was a lot of public interest. As you know, the Flower Bridge had a lot of interest in this, and they were, had an expectation of what was going to be done. I just want to be clear to the public that this is a reduction in the scope of work, and less will be done than people might be expecting.
Could be. You know, when we get to that funding year, we may be, as we often do, as I just said, we change numbers. Project costs change, so at this point, it certainly could be a reduction in scope of services, but.
Well, it is by the budget numbers, but.
But we're not building it in this fiscal year. We're not asking for the funding in this fiscal year, so no shovels are going into the ground for it, so.
Come back for fiscal nineteen-twenty, additional one-fifty. If we need that money, that we may come back in the future, you're asking for that capital.
But it's not on the capital plan, right?
It's in twenty-twenty.
No, that's, that's, that only gets you to six-ninety-five. You're missing a hundred-and-fifty.
Six-ninety-five was the total.
Previous year was eight-fifty.
Twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, a hundred-and-fifty.
But the previous, last year's capital budget, the total, we ask you guys, and the reason why we ask you this is so that we can track the total cost of the project. And last year, you had listed the total cost of the project. It's eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand. This year, it's being listed at six-hundred-and-ninety-five, so it is a reduction of a hundred-and-fifty from last year, total.
We could have refined our cost from last year. Right now, the cost of the project's about six-hundred thousand. And we have about four-hundred-and-fifty.
Okay, so I just wanted clarification. So the scope of the project has remained the same?
It has.
Okay, so it's just a clarification, so it's actually a savings, then? It's not a reduction in scope?
No, the overall project concept plan is the same. The funding was originally going to be six-hundred thousand, and we were going to find savings in the eight-fifty through some design development. 850 through some design development, which we've done, so we've kind of reduced some of the items. But the concept plan is still consistent with what we plan on doing.
And the funding is consistent because of the savings you found?
No, we're, again, we need 150,000 dollars more.
Which we don't have in the capital improvement plan. Okay, so.
Our cost may come down once we do.
Okay. But you would need, to get to the same that we had last year, you would need not only 2021, but an additional 150. I have last year's plan right here. You can look at it. Yep. Last year, the total project for culture, open space planning was 850. This year, it's 695.
So we can certainly get you some additional information.
Thank you.
Fair question. This is your slide, but it just shows, again, from a capital standpoint, how we are at this point with our recommendations, which is what we thought from back from the tribal meeting, going up to the 6.4 percent from a, from a capital expenditure side. Again, that is, that shows the bonds dropping off, and the green is the cash that we've.
I'm not sure we ever agreed on this.
We never really actually agreed to go to seven.
But you guys didn't agree to anything that night because you changed the number after we left, but yes, when you brought it up that.
I don't think the number was ever changed.
The number wasn't changed.
Yeah.
The 6.7?
The slide that was shown, I believe you showed the capital number going back up to the prior years or close to the prior years, which is where we're getting the guidance from it, for the overall budget.
Recall ever agreeing with that?
Again, it's your job to fund things. We're just showing you that we're staying well within the guideline of 7 percent.
And even if it's at 6.7, it's probably still within the green.
It doesn't move the needle that much on this. Because, again, while you're on this slide, the point of this slide is the cash for capital, and to smooth the slide so that, to Kevin's earlier point, if we didn't use cash for capital, then we would not have a cash need in 2019 and 2020.
Correct.
But we would be building in significant tax increases down the road, and so the extent that we can use the cash for capital to pay for some capital projects currently, that would be helpful. And the HJMS issuance is the full project cost? Is that indicative of a full 24?
The assumption in the model right now is borrowing of 18, a little over 18, so it's the net of the grant, wood borrow for the state grants. And assume that from a cash flow standpoint, depending on how rapidly the construction's going. You know, the other point you raised there, what I've shown here, just for simplicity's sake, is 15-year issuance of HJMS, one tranche, one full issuance at 18 million. Realistically, you probably split it out over two years. It just depends on how rapidly the construction goes. And so that's also why the first budget year that it hits is still 2021. You know, theoretically, if it was approved this year in the same amount, you could issue a partial, it could be part of the fiscal 19 issuance and be slightly into that light blue. That would also be less than the dark blue, you know, proportion. So it's sort of a balancing act there, in order to be overly complicated.
So this is, this is, this is not fact, this is prognostication, and it's based on 7 percent of budgets that we haven't even started talking about yet in terms of how they would grow. There's an assumption of growth in budgets at 2 percent.
2 percent in every year.
Assumes that all the bonding is done at maximum 10 years.
Except for Henry James.
What's that?
Except for Henry James.
Henry James at 15. At 15, right. So there are other ways to smooth this curve, but this is what we use as our tool when we talk about the cash for capital.
And we don't want to leave anybody with this board or the public with the impression that we were trying to hit a 7 percent number here. We weren't, we didn't, we didn't even know what the percentage was going to turn out to. We had a budget hearing, we had discussion with staff, we followed the traditional process of prioritizing needs, talking about what our true capital needs were, and we had a very robust discussion about it, and it, candidly, we had no idea until we asked Sean right before we approved it what the number was going to roll up to, and it was the 6.4 percent.
Yep. Okay.
Something we felt compelled to share with you on the out years, we brought up the radio study. It is, as noted, it's an emerging and evolving issue. We've, we've put a placeholder of 3.5 million on the 2021, 22 year. We don't honestly know what the true cost or timeframe is going to be at this point. We need to determine that through the first study and then an additional study in a subsequent year, but this is something that we felt compelled to share with you. It's a, it's a rather large item that is, that is going to show up, or has shown up on the capital improvement plan, so.
You feel as though that's a conservative estimate, or?
Sure. A few of our neighboring towns are a bit further along in this process than we are. Most recently, Avon and Bloomfield, and they were looking at numbers between about 3 and 4 million, so we just sort of, based on their experience, find a between. But again, it could be less, of course. It really depends on what we learn from the phase one and the phase two studies.
Is there a number of towns in our area that are in this process? We're looking at the potential, you know, possibly partnering with a town on a, you know, if we end up hiring a consultant to try to get a better cost.
I always feel compelled to ask this. How does this segue or fit in with the fire and the emergency volunteer ambulance association?
Yeah, sure, that would be, that would be part of the study, is how they would work together, but they are, they are separate. You have the ability to talk to fire, fires are going to talk to us. They're different systems. You share some towers, but there are different, you know, different, different radio systems, completely, how they actually operate. We have the ambulance service, so that's, there'll be no interruption in anything, but we are having constant coverage issues on the police, on the police side, where there's sections of Terriffill where nobody can hear each other, and there are significant areas down in the Southland where the officers can't be reached by way of portable or vice versa. Fire Department doesn't seem to have that issue because of the, I think because of the range that they operate on, and I'm not an expert in the radios, but I think they operate on an 800 range, where we may be at a 400 range. So there may be towers that are needed, there may be replacement of things, and obviously that study would be looking at working together to share whatever equipment, resources that are already there.
Thank you. So yeah, as part of our deliberations, we really wanted to do our best effort to be as transparent as we could with what we think is coming from a cost standpoint, both in the short term, long term, and again, not looking to come back and surprise this board with either small or large, but I was really, really trying to look at, in a short period of time, we're going to get your hands around what's going on, and she's done a great job with what we think our funding needs are going to be for the upcoming year. So that's, listen to me talk. Appreciate the opportunity.
All right, so our job as a board tonight was, was to listen, to challenge, so I guess, and, and to say that, you know, we were serious about the 175, and we're considerably above that. I have a couple of questions, and I'll open it to other members to ask. In the, Eric, in your slide, the first build slide, what is the full-time equivalent add subtracts in that first $321,000 contractual number?
If you could pull that up again.
Yeah. So you have contractual salary increases at $271,000. That is, does that assume no adds or cuts to staff?
Yeah. Maria?
Sure, so that, that particular figure is not adding any staff or reducing staff, that's simply what was negotiated in our various collective bargaining agreements, either for general wage increases or required negotiated staff increases for employees. So that does not include any new employees.
Okay, but it also doesn't include any fewer employees, right?
But it does include presumably factoring in for retirements and higher levels.
Does it or not?
Right, so for our salary numbers, for director level positions where we were anticipating some decreases, we did factor that into the salary line items, those decreases were possible.
We have the director level, not at the staff level.
So the Board of Ed, when they have a tenure or longstanding teacher retire, replaced with someone younger, there is a built-in savings. Is that baked into these numbers in your case?
Sure, so from rest of my knowledge at this time, the only retirements that we were aware of or that we have formal notice of were two at the director level. It's possible we could see others throughout the year, but again, as I was aware, it was those two director positions that we had retirements. One, we anticipated about a $5,000 savings within the police department budget for somebody coming in at a lower rate. And then the second director retirement that we are anticipating, about 70 percent of that individual salary is actually funded through the special revenue fund and user fees. So the amount of savings to the general fund was quite negligible, and I think we factored that about $2,500. The other smaller savings we anticipated was the resignation of Department Head, Mr. Kimble, not a retirement, but we did also factor in about approximately, I think it was five, I'm cutting from off, but I believe about an anticipated savings of about $5,000 there. But again, other than those positions, we don't have actual letters from any way it's time indicating, you know, specific retirements.
65,000.
And then overtime in, is that up, down? I know last year that, that when we, we added a couple of policemen a year or two years ago phased in, the idea was that, that was to reduce and eliminate overtime. What, what, are we budgeting overtime now, or?
Sure, and particularly, most of this increase is associated with police overtime. We did, based on our historical spending and this particular budget, propose decreasing the training overtime budget, but increasing the regular overtime budget. So we did reallocate some of those savings from the training overtime budget to the regular overtime budget for police, but there was still additional cost. And again, what we did is we did our best to look at recent trends and historical trends and felt that we were consistently under budget in the true cost. So again, looking at trends, we felt that this was representative of the true cost of doing business essentially.
Can you follow up on the same topic? Because I had a question too, that was related to police overtime, because specifically last year, we added a dispatcher, and that was specifically added to reduce overtime. And I read in the write-up that overtime of dispatchers has gone down 10 percent, and I was kind of shocked that we added a position and the overtime only went down 10 percent. So.
Sure, so again, very new. If I.
And so, don't be the contrary for this pod.
If I could start.
Sure.
But my understanding is that that service improvement was more about ensuring that we had coverage of two dispatchers on per shift, for first and second shift. But I think that probably our interim chief would be better positioned to speak to the history of that, just because I wasn't here last year.
So the driving factor was, was definitely the workload, and with the increased number of calls, specifically the medical calls, and the required time it takes to find an ambulance, especially out of town, we were looking at that as being the number one reason. In addition to that, we were expecting a decrease in overtime, and it has. And overall, there's not a huge amount of overtime generated from the dispatchers. So comparison of last year and this year, the same, same timeframes, it's now at 11.5 percent. It was 10 percent when this was written up in January, but 11.5 percent. We do expect to see more, especially when the vacation time comes, but that's only if we, you know, maintain seven dispatchers all at once. If one leaves, we'll be right back, you know, sort of where we were. But there's a savings, but to look at it this way, there may be three shifts of overtime in one month for dispatchers, and last year, there might have been five. So there's very little savings because there's very little in overtime anyways. This month alone, we've had one overtime shift, you know, almost through the month. But we do expect that, that 10 or 11.5 percent creep up at times over the course of the year to be a decent number.
So I have a couple of questions. I'll go, kind of go through the list. Technology, so there's a $70,000 line item for contractual services. Now, I know that the Board of Ed is going to straight Google Suite, is that correct? And is the, is the town going to G Suite?
No, we're not. So we did, we evaluated Google, G Suite versus Microsoft, and the town's pretty much Microsoft shot as it is. So we decided to, not to accelerate the expenditures, that we're going to take just our exchange, our mail, and put that into the cloud and stay at the desktop of Microsoft products. So that piece that we see, and I believe that number's like 17,000, is the initial start with just the service itself. I believe there was probably maybe 10 for consulting as well.
I don't know, it says $70,000 in the piece.
And then the other piece that's in there as well is the, so that's, that's the email piece there.
Right.
So the other piece was, we had a contract for our Simplicity, our hyper-convergent technology. When we bought the equipment, it had a three-year warranty on it.
Does it, does it make sense to partner with the schools, really what my question comes to? I mean, if they're going to Google Suite, why wouldn't we?
We looked at the expenditures both ways, with Google Suite and Microsoft, and Microsoft was cheaper. The thing that we have to be cognizant of here too is that when we move to the cloud, we cannot go in the space where education is. We go into a space where government is.
Right, that's why they have G Suite.
But, but on the government side, Microsoft puts us in a specific cloud with federal governments, state and locals.
Right.
So, and that was like probably, I think it was like $8 a seat on a user versus, it was a little bit more, it was more than that. I don't have the exact figures for you, Kevin, but I could be helpful.
I just didn't know if you talked since Burke's there.
So we have, over the last year or so, we have started an IT steering group, so that has been, that was one of the recommendations of the Bloom-Shapiro IT audit. So Melissa and myself meet with Jason Casey and Rick on roughly a monthly basis for just this type of reason, to sort of coordinate issues where we can, we can share. So this is sort of unique because we, through these meetings, gave them this, this plan that we had, which was to move towards Google, mainly because the bulk of our workforce, our teachers, are working in the Google platform.
Right.
Unlike the office folks. So we will have to change in our Board of Ed central office, we will move to Google. It's really being driven by the teachers, whereas for the general government, there's not that natural Google link to, you know, to have them move. So this, this, this whole budget process came because we gave, you know, in this process, we said, you know, this is what we're planning to do going, going forward, so they made sure that they were, you know, ready to, to handle a separate email server which used to be shared. So it's, it's a good question, but I think it's really being driven by, we have teachers who have to have two different emails, and this gives them one, but that's because they're really using Google.
I just didn't know if it made sense from a government perspective.
Yeah, so I think they made the.
I know there's towns and cities and government organizations that are running the G Suite, so that's really, and I knew you guys were. Just another question on the road improvements, so that's a $162,000 increase on town road improvements, so that, that goes in the operating budget versus the CNR budget or cash for capital?
It all comes from, I think Rob said it, said well, the payment comes out of several different buckets, and what it comes down to is, right now, in order to maintain our 165 miles of roadway, if we resurface the roads every 17 years, it means that we have to pay roughly one mile per year, I'm sorry, 10 miles per year, and the cost for that is roughly 1.3 million, the current cost of asphalt. And so this is restoring, where last year, we took the money out of a county road account as a one-time action, and this is restoring it, and it's still not restoring it to its previous values.
And then just the social service worker, so that's $45,000. Did the benefits increase as well? I mean, on the benefits line? So I know in the past, like, the, the number you guys will present with us is what's going to hit in our operating cost. I didn't know if those benefits are also an increase on the benefits side as well.
Yeah, they've been increased. All that number.
Fully loaded, it's 70. Yeah, no, I got the 70,000, so it's going to be an operating. Okay, thank you.
So on the social worker, the designation, does that go with the social worker, or does that stay with the town?
So the LCSW designation would be a licensure that our director would be working towards. So currently, our department does not have. So currently, our department does not have what's called a licensed clinical social worker, which means we can't provide any clinical services to our residents when they walk in the door. It's a two-year process. Most of the cost would be near one. And so this particular professional development designation, this LCSW licensure, is different from a licensed master's level social worker.
Right.
So this is to pay for that person's schooling?
Schooling, yeah.
It's actually supervision hours. So to become a licensed clinical social worker, there's some testing, but there's also approximately 100 supervision hours that you need to receive from another licensed clinical social worker. So it's a combination of the testing costs as well as the supervision hours.
So are there other departments where we pay for the education that will end up, that certification ends up being with the employee? So they leave, certification leaves?
Correct.
So are there other departments in which we are already paying, that we have, is there precedent for that?
My understanding is yes.
And who is that?
A trade warden.
Trade warden.
Trade warden.
So I was on that thing.
So, but that's to maintain your certification as a trade warden?
No, there's been several certifications that I know myself and I think other staff as well. Recently became a certified energy manager. The cost for that course was part of my professional development here. You know, and I think it's like any professional credential, the intent is to work here, it's going to benefit the town, but at some point, when I leave, it stays with me, it doesn't stay with the town.
And are they similar costs?
Probably not. Depending on the particular course or certification, it's going to vary. But again, this particular certification is very specific to social work. But we also most likely would, I think, be able to get a pretty competitive rate on supervision because of our governmental status. Oftentimes, it's actually much more expensive for somebody who's going into private practice. But usually, for the supervision piece, when it's a governmental agency, we'll usually get a better rate because of that.
But isn't it a question, could we hire someone who already has the certification? And what would the difference in the salary be?
Sure, sure. So in theory, we could have, we could have hired somebody with that particular designation. It can be difficult at times. But again, just at the moment, we don't have somebody within the department with that designation. In fact, Kristen is actually our only MSW-level social worker at the moment.
Is there any option?
To take a current employee and let them, it's not that they're hiring something new.
I see.
Correct.
Oh, this is to take, all right.
Can someone refresh my memory? Why do we have the paving in three different places?
The what?
The paving money in three different places. Why can't we?
You speak five, didn't you?
Well, it's not transparent that way, and it's very rough, it's very difficult to keep track of.
Right. And so I think that this is probably one of those items that would be a great policy conversation within that context of updating the capital policy. So there are a number of ways we could do it. You know, I think one could argue that if we know that a cost approximately $1.3 million a year based on our paving management study and schedule, that we know we're going to reasonably anticipate that. And ultimately, we could work towards moving all of that $1.3 million into the operating budget. Right? It would be tough, it would be difficult, we could do it.
She's watching right now.
Another option would be to pay for it all out of capital. The challenge is if we don't have enough cash for capital, you're then bonding for paving, and it really is a routine ongoing expense. So there really are a number of ways that we could budget for it as well as pay for it. But ultimately, that's really a policy decision of you all in terms of where you're most comfortable doing that. My understanding is historically here, we had these sort of three buckets of funding sources and where we were budgeting for paving. Is that correct, Tom?
That's correct. And over time, going back probably seven or eight years ago, the operating budget for paving was at $475,000. It was slowly being crept up. And I think at the time, there was more of a policy decision to go for an approach where the vast majority of it would come out of operating because it is simply a recurrent cost. And I think we've used the analogy before, you know, they're painting the Golden Gate Bridge, they set aside the painting crew so that when they get from one side to the other, they simply start back painting all over again because that's where it used to be. And that's the same thing as we have our 165 miles of road. We do 10 miles each and every year. As soon as we've paved all of roads, it's been 17 years and we're right back at the beginning. From our point, from a management standpoint, if it was all moved into the capital, the risk for us would be handling large fluctuations in the volume of paving we're doing between year to year is difficult, just because we're adjusting our workforce for that. Certainly, you know, however we come to levelize it, I think it's definitely more of a policy decision.
Thank you.
I was going to ask a question about the ambulance service.
Can we finish on roads?
Yeah. I was just going to simply ask, you know, what are, what are the differences in material costs year over year? How can those fluctuate, and is it significant?
They can't be significant. We are very fortunate, we buy all of our asphalt off of the state vendor and place contract, the IP contract, and that's generally supplied by Colosso, so they're close, and it works well for us for our major paving operations. The way the state bid is set up is that there's an asphalt modifier. So the price of asphalt throughout the year, throughout the month, throughout even week to week, varies based upon the price of liquid asphalt as it's purchased in New Haven port. So it's actually a separate bill that's tacked on. Two years ago, we saw a decrease in the prices we were paying per ton of asphalt, and we did our best to take advantage of that. Right now, we feel this year coming up, things are creeping back up. The other thing, just to circle back real quick on capital, the one small piece that can't be funded out of capital is when we do some of our maintenance, such as crack seal, where the life expectancy of that doesn't meet the capital requirements. You're always going to need some in the operating.
Thanks.
Just a word to your point. And the other thing that's sort of out there, and it's more like a line item, is TARP, Town Aid Road. We do know that that's at risk this year, but that's generally how we fund small equipment for highway maintenance. And there's a maintenance schedule that Tom has. I don't know if you brought copies, but you might want to pass those out if you do. And then LoSIP, which gets tied to the CNR. But one of the things I wanted to highlight is, you know, prior to 2008, the dump truck that we're now seeing in capital was actually part of operating.
Right.
In response to the fiscal crisis that occurred in 2008, Ms. Glassman and the board at that time said, okay, we need to be fiscally prudent. They kept it in operating but put it in CNR because CNR is tied to operating. And then this budget, the truck is being taken out of operating and put in capital. So that's a shift away from where Barbara wanted to go, understandably, and it's certainly a capital asset. It's certainly over $100,000, but it's something you buy every year. So over time, to Rob's point, it's something we need. The question is, which, where do we put it?
Yeah, this is the part that really makes my head hurt, which is, you know, when we moved it, we created CNR to solve a problem, and now we have a different problem, and we're moving something that might otherwise be back. And I think that's not good policy.
Right.
It's not transparent, and it makes it difficult to keep track of. I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong, I'm just saying that it.
It's morphed.
Yeah. It's sort of like the CNR, where we're spending the same $400,000 every year. I understand.
And to Maria's credit, a lot of towns do put big trucks in capital. We have not. We've always tied it to operating because it's year after year. To Tom's point, we've always tried to get away from that. So it's certainly a reasonable thing to do. I'm not saying you did a wrong thing. It's certainly reasonable. Many towns do that. And given the constraints we put on you, it's a logical thing. So from our perspective, as we move things around, to Rob's point, there may be a shift there, but it's not because you did anything wrong.
So I spoke with Maria today. I'm committed, as we go forward, to work on these, the policy, certainly work with new finance directors. Sean's not, you didn't leave us this mess, you inherited it. So that's not what I'm saying at all. But you can go fix somebody else's problems someplace else. But we need to be better about this, I think, and we can be, because it's, budgeting is not about squirreling money here and then grabbing it back there. And I think I get that feeling too often as I go through this book, and from my seat, that's not a comfortable place to be. I did have, just go back to a couple of things real quick. On the social worker, I just want to ask maybe Matt or Burke, how many social workers do we have that are employees of the Board of Ed, and where are they located, and how are they used? I understand that the issues that the social workers deal with are different, but I'm just trying to get a sense of economies of scale and other places where we might think cooperatively about that kind of function.
We have one social worker at the high school. The high school has about 1,400 students. And two social workers currently across the elementary schools, while one at the middle school, and we requested a third social worker in this current budget that we presented.
So that's an add, that was?
That would be an add, an additional one point off, right.
Now, was there any discussion between all of us that this might, that these skills might be transferable or shareable or services provided, understanding that students are also family members and that some of the issues that the schools are the same? Or maybe I just don't understand the need, so.
Sure. So in part, and I'd also ask Kristen to elaborate on this, but our social worker, while they certainly could work with families or children, we also serve on the town side, the adult and senior population. And this person would be based out of the senior center at Eno. So I do envision that this person, the bulk of their work would be around working with adults and seniors, which is a different population. Kristen, did you?
Yeah, and I think just to add to that, that the bulk of the work is an entirely different section of work than what we see in the school system. The school system, social workers are dealing with the issues that you're seeing with the school and working with the child and IEPs and things of that nature. On the town side, we're doing things such as basic needs, choices counseling, which helps seniors with Medicare issues. We're making sure that people have rent and oil and things of that nature. We do interface with each other, we do communicate with each other, refer back and forth, but it's not the same type of work, and it's also not the same specialty. So someone that's trained to be a school social worker is not going to be trained to work with me at my office. It's not the same type of work at all. And also, the licensure and the credentials are also very different, and some of the schooling can be different as well.
I'll welcome that question. Hi.
Hi. A couple of things on the social, the social worker piece. One, can you walk us through the statistics? I appreciate you guys giving us the information on what you guys are doing, but can you compare the trends year over year so that we can see, is there an increase, decrease, are they static? Do you have that information?
Sure. And I apologize that they may not have been as thorough as they could have been. I was out all last week with the flu. So I could get that information for you as far as the trends over the courses of the years. What I was trying to demonstrate to you was the amount of work that's being done by the director, that's direct service work, and looking at the things that are coming into the communities that we can't currently handle. For example, the opioid epidemic and the opioid crisis. There's a lot of work being done in other towns and other areas that we have not yet been able to latch on to or tackle. The Farmington Valley, oh, like having regional committees working on issues together. Farmington Valley Health District has received a mini grant, and they're just starting to work with us as far as having evenings where families can come out and learn about the opioid epidemic, participate in our can, train, things of that nature. And those types of initiatives, we can't fully participate in because we don't have time. There's been a lot of meetings and such that I would want to participate in, but I can't remove myself from the office because I'm doing direct service work. So that was the road that I was taking, what I was trying to demonstrate to you. And it has been an increase in some of the areas. One of the things that I've highlighted was the change to the juvenile review board. Since my coming on board and having worked 95 days, I've already reviewed 19 cases. And statistically, on average, over the past five years, we've only heard six cases every year. So we're seeing an increase in need, and we're meeting that demand, but how far can we spread ourselves?
And to Rob's point, did you, have you spoken with other towns? Obviously, regional cost sharing, we did that in engineering and building, I mean, yeah.
In terms of with other towns, that's going to be one of the things that we're going to tackle with the opioid crisis?
No, I meant in terms of a shared position.
Oh, no, we have not looked at that, but we certainly could.
We had this discussion with the Board of Slick, and it was, you're familiar with it, we talked about the increase in population and we need to fund two additional police officers, and we did that. We looked at public works, we needed to fund an additional pole driver and have an additional custodian in that place. We've looked at the engineering department, we've added additional staff there, albeit creative. We've looked at the building department, we've added staff there. When we got down and talked about the social services department, we realized to nobody's fault that we hadn't spent any time there yet, and there was a need that clearly is upon us, not only with the growth of our population, and we've got some cool charts that Melissa put together on the number of citizens in this town, I believe it's going up to 900.
900 since the last census.
Since the last census. We're one of the few towns in Connecticut that's actually growing in population. So we do have a demand, and as you're aware of and your board is aware of, we have an aging population in this town. That's why we looked at the senior center, that's why we did a lot of studies. And as that population ages, the needs change as well, and that puts pressure and demand on the social services department. So again, everybody's versed a little bit, and Rick was so ideal too when I first said it, but this is not, we're not viewing this as an increase in services. We're truly viewing this as a maintenance of services, and the demand has increased for the services.
Kristen, for the hearing, if you could please get the stats that show the services and the service level changes over time. I have to do this because I made Nick do this. When he did the dispatch, he would kill me if I didn't ask the same thing of you that I asked for Nick. And I suggest you talk to Nick about what I was looking for in terms of data and the amount of research that we made the ambulance do for their request as well. That would just be awesome to show us. Thank you.
Chris Peterson, Twain Logue Drive, since Great Connecticut. Can I, well, Chris is on the Board of Slick, so, no, he's one of us. Yeah. But also, just from, you know, when we went through the process of speaking with each of the departments in their functional areas and expertise, and it was, you know, each individual, each put a fantastic presentation together, and we generally asked him for some level of budget increase. And when the question was posed to Kristen, I said, you know, do you need more money? And she said, no. And that was refreshing, making business. You rarely hear somebody say, no, I don't need any more money. But I said, well, do you have enough people to deliver the services that you're currently providing? And she said, no. And that was more concerning and glaring, to Sean's point. You all have been fantastic stewards, looking at each functional area of the city, of the community of town, you've moved along the last couple of years. And this one seems to have been, as John said, we're growing into it. We want to continue to make sure we deliver for the seniors, any service members that come back. And the captain can certainly give you statistics around. We will see an increase in the opioid impact in this town. It's just the fact that we're sitting where we are, but it's coming, it's coming quick. So we have to build for that as well.
So in terms of that, Captain, and not to take it to the, you know. My apologies. You know, to the extent that someone doesn't know who to call and calls you instead, is there a referral between the groups? Or what happens if someone calls in and says, you know, I feel like I'm in a, you know, suicide prevention, or, you know, the opioid crisis, you know, they want to stop taking drugs, for example, they don't know who to call, they call 911. Is there that referral and that relationship back and forth between the two groups?
Not necessarily in that case. So in that scenario, we would go out there, we would have the ambulance service worker as well, and in all likelihood, they would be going off to the hospital for that immediate, immediate help. And then the hospitals then have providers there who will try to do referrals, try to do follow-up. There's a whole process that somebody would have to go through, detox if they are addicted, and then, you know, certain steps to then get into a program. But we have encountered people who do need help. They're not in a condition right then where they have to go to the hospital, or they don't want to go to the hospital, and we do need somebody to refer them to. We have found some resources, but not here locally. And if we did have somebody here in town, that would be, I think, extremely beneficial for us.
So it would help your department as well?
It certainly would.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to ask one last question about the ambulance. So last year, we made a contribution to the ambulance service. This year, we're going to make, we're being asked to make another contribution? Is that correct?
Yes.
And then in 2020, we're going to be asked to make another contribution?
Yeah. So the ambulance, if you look over the past decade or so, I don't want to misquote, but most years, they're not, they're needing assistance.
Correct. We went back and looked at their last 10 years of audits, and they have not been financially solvent for either of those 10 years. So it is. So it is clearly a systemic problem.
We weren't the ones to subsidize.
Right, right. So they've just been operating in a deficit eight of the last 10 years. And so, one of the things that, you know, we've discussed pretty extensively is that if they are coming to us seeking such a large subsidy for their operating budget, that there needs to be much more analysis, particularly around their cost recovery, how they're billing, how they're collecting for their services, as well as their governance structure, because again, I think that if we are providing a subsidy at that level, we certainly need to have a voice and a seat at the table. So there's definitely, from our conversations, I think, a much higher level of analysis that is needed, certainly on this issue. But again.
No, this is a, this is a service that we obviously need to provide, it needs to be provided at a high quality, but I'm very open to making sure that we explore all options to make sure we're also doing it in a cost-effective way.
Yeah, so we've spent a lot of time on this, and, you know, this board pushed back pretty hard on the $80,000 request a year ago, and you guys weren't here, we gave them $50,000 instead. I don't want to spend 20 minutes more talking about this. I met with Melissa and Lisa and Pete Tadone and Mike Delahanny, how many, oh, and Sean, how many months ago was that?
Probably November.
Yeah. And, you know, we need a long-term solution here. It is disconcerting that the amount that we're going to fund this year is more than what we gave them last year, and that it doesn't.
That we might.
Well, we've been asked to fund, and the amount continues. This is a capital asset issue. It's a separation of volunteer organization from the town, you know, and it needs to be dealt with. I don't, I don't think we can resolve the, answer the question.
No.
It's a significant part of the increase in the overage, and so it's, you know, I'm not sure what our answer will be, but it's a request, so.
Can I just ask, could we, I think there's no one here from the ambulance, could you request that someone be there at the public hearing? Because one of the things we had asked them to do is do an extra fundraiser, and I know they did that, and I was wondering if that can be used to offset some of the 80. I don't know what the number was.
Again, we're not going to solve this, but I think that's a good idea. The second thing is, I'd be equally interested to see how the uptake of that ambulance that they bought before they should have is coming, you know, just because that apparently is not doing as well as they thought, because the budget, is that fair?
No, they knew that they weren't going to be able to fully fund it through call volume. The challenge they have, as we've talked about, and when we came in and presented to your board, is there an in-between period where the call volume is not at a level that can fully reimburse the second.
It was supposed to work its way back, Sean, does that happen or not? That's a way.
And it is there, so we can debate whether it was the right time or not, but they have a level of service they're required to provide.
Except now there, if there's $180,000 to buy yet another ambulance.
Correct, they have, they have two ambulances that they have to maintain.
That's not in our capital.
It is.
It is at this point in the out year, and as you'll remember, we presented to your board last year when we had a very long debate on this, we came to you for 80, saying at that point, it was a one-time appropriation, but we were going to be back in this operating budget with a fully fleshed out recommendation, we've included the chairman and other folks in that discussion. I made the presentation to you, and I told you that, and that we would also be exploring capital, because this was not a short-term problem, this was a long-term problem, and we have an obligation as a community to make sure that our folks can get to the hospital.
Correct, and so that is an essential core government service, absolutely. And if that need cannot, if we're paying this much, and it's, looks like we're going to be paying, I mean, are there discussions going in about bringing it in-house then?
Or privatize it.
Or privatize it, or, because it's, this is what we mean by it needs to be addressed and not piecemeal every year, you know.
Remind you of what union costs are before we think about bringing it in-house. But, you know, we do need to explore a longer-term solution on.
I'm not saying I want it in-house, I'm saying are we exploring options to make sure that the service continues?
So from a positive perspective, that's something that I'm very concerned about, and I would like to pursue. I think if we look at the big picture, we've been getting, I think, a really good deal as a town, because we basically had a volunteer ambulance service for many years, and now that model is just under stress.
Right, so. And not likely to get better.
And not likely to get better.
Yeah, agreeing.
And so what other towns do is they have private ambulance services.
Yep, and we have explored that, and we've talked about it, but we've all got the horror stories of people waiting 20, 30 minutes for the ambulance to show up in some of those cases, so.
Now, now we're into that 20-minute discussion.
Sure, so one of the other items that we've discussed that we also need to look at, right, is the service delivery method, because there are a lot of ways to provide the service. My understanding is right now, we have a very high level of service, so that, again, my understanding is that we have a paramedic that's dispatched with each and every single medical call, regardless of the type of medical call. Some communities choose to have a lower level of service, some communities have just a, what's called an EMT basic, go out for certain medical calls, and then a paramedic is only dispatched out for higher level of calls, such as, you know, somebody's in cardiac arrest or something of that nature. Some regions contract with their local hospital to provide paramedical service, some communities contract out with private agencies, some communities use their paid fire staff to double as EMTs or to double as EMTs and paramedics. So there really are truly a lot of possible ways for delivering the service, but it's also, I think, that can be conversation about that level of service, and, you know, do we want a paramedic being dispatched on all calls regardless of type? Those are some of the conversations, I think, that.
So we are bored of being having those conversations.
So this is an item that we just added, we meet with our neighboring towns on a monthly basis, and this is an item that we added to next month's agenda to understand, how do our neighboring towns handle this?
I would just say, in the interest of making Rob happy, and then not talk about this for a long time. We did talk about kind of all of this last year, and the expectation of this board was that, and you weren't there, so I'm not blaming you, but that, that the folks were going to go back, figure this out, and come up with a solution, and I'm not hearing that that happened. Maybe I'm not understanding, but I guess I would say, I would expect that you don't come back again next year and say, okay, we need to study this.
So the meeting that we had, Sean, my recollection was that there would be, there would be help in the 2019 year with a solution that would be more of a permanent solution, long-term.
One of which was potentially buying an ambulance in place of an operating.
Fair, fair enough.
We presented that in good faith of the meeting that you and I were both in.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not upset about that. The ambulance, what I'm saying is that the operating expense support, it either has to be, we, we need a governance issue, which is not just come to us when there's a shortfall. And the reason that they came to us is that they went to the fire district and they said no, and they couldn't raise the money, and they paid cash for a $300, or $180,000 ambulance when they didn't have, and it took much longer to make it cash flow positive, and so that was a mistake. And the taxpayers now are going to cover that mistake like we did last year, but it has to have, we have to go from here. And I'm not, from my recollection, the meeting, it wasn't that we had absolutely decided that we would start buying the capital equipment for them.
It's not a next-year capital funding.
It has to be some sort of transfer price for that, if that's the way we're going to do it, so. You have a budget you have to put out, you put those things in the budget, fair enough. It's our job to look at them and say, this does or doesn't make sense for us.
I'm going to move the conversation on.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just from my perspective, you know, our guidance was 1.75%. Maria presented a budget of 3.86%, and then this Board of Selectmen came in at 4.6%? I just think we.
4.36.
4.36, thank you. We're a far away, we're a long way away from 1.75, so I would, my recommendation would be that you guys have to go back and look at your budget.
I would just add to that, I am very disposed to not including the ambulance or the tar transfer, because the tar transfer was done in response to a fiscal crisis when we thought the world was coming, it was highlighted in our budget books with the blue page saying, if the world doesn't fall apart, this should go back. So I wouldn't hold them, again, I wouldn't hold that 200 so against the 175, just because those were done in response, in consultation even with Rob.
I was going to make that point, and I started to, and then I got off that thought. I, I think to the extent that we took out the $2.5 million reserve that we put in, I've noted a couple of times, it's funny, we put a $2.5 million reserve in and we got a million and a half back, you know, there was a million dollars of other stuff, right? Is that, I mean, our surplus this year is going to be about a million and a half dollars. Fair enough, projected?
Because, right.
For a whole bunch of reasons, right? Anyway, that's, that wasn't my point. The point is, if, if we can take out the 2.5, we could put back the other things that we took out to get there, and so I would be willing to consider the 175 off of, you basically get 250 back, right? Because you don't have, you add it back to last year's budget and you don't count it as an increase this year. Would that be fair?
So it was 120, 130, Tom, for tar?
It was 127.
127, and then the 80, so that's a little over 200.
Well, I'm not sure about the, you're putting in the ambulance?
I would, I would.
You would, I would. I would do the math off of replenishing last year's budget and billing off of that.
So including the 35 for the partial restoration of paving funds, or no?
Where was that?
That's, that was 35,000.
Which line item?
It's the second, pink, is that pink?
Down from the top?
Purple, what color? Oh, partial restoration.
The second green, yes. Thank you.
Was that something we specifically took out last year?
We did take it out, trying to get down to the number when the world was falling apart.
All right, so now we're, now, yeah, so now we're getting a little too specific. I would say, I would, I would normalize last year's budget and not include things that were added back. Tell us what they are, make a case for it, but then work hard and find someplace else to get down closer to the 175 off of that base.
I would just point you to the numbers that, and we're at 369, so take out the ambulance 327, which is contractual increases and benefits and putting those numbers back in. So you're asking us to cut positions.
So we did, we did ask Maria to do an analysis to look at, what would we save if we closed the library on Sundays, what would we save if we got rid of a snowplow? And we would have to do a whole host of those.
Do you have that list?
We actually made a list of those, because we would have to make, I'm sorry, I'm talking.
I'm sorry, pull that up. So, right, so the Board of Selectmen had asked us to do analysis, because that was such a large number, you know, a number of that size isn't trying to trickle over here and there, but it would be true service reductions. So we looked at a couple of different categories, if you will, so, one, we looked at modifications to our operating schedules of buildings that are open to the public, so that was town hall, senior center, library, and having reduced schedules. So that, those were some potential scenarios that we, that we ran. We also went and looked at service improvements or enhancements that were made over the last three fiscal years. So those would be items such as the two police officers, the dispatcher, the pod truck driver that were added. And if you have that memo, we can certainly forward it on to you all, and that analysis showed, if we were to eliminate all of the positions and service enhancements that were made over the last three fiscal years, and reduce our operating schedules for those three buildings during the summertime, if we did all of those things, that would come up to about $623,000 in savings. So we would have to make nearly all of those service reductions in order to get to the 1.75, but we can forward you that list, I think that might be illustrative of that.
Yeah, that's fine, I understand that, but, you know, when we, when we have collective bargaining, and no one likes to hear this, but I make, I make this speech every year, in the private sector, not everybody gets a raise, not everybody gets a 3% raise, and people that underperform don't necessarily have their job again. And I understand that the job of the Board of Selectmen and the town, and I know they're not, these are real people and not widgets, but is to deliver services, but, you know, you can't just add in the $321,000 and say that that's absolutely necessary to spend in a context of trying to be fiscally responsible. And we don't have the same level of fear and loathing that we had last year about what the state is going to do, but believe me, the state is not done with cutting budgets and trying to balance itself. And we were very aggressively responsible last year with, with reserves and contingencies, much more so than most towns. I think we're in a very nice position, but we don't have to go back to thinking that we're fat, dumb, and happy again. We need to be critical about where and how we spend money, and that's what we're asking you to do, to take a hard look at, and.
Do you want to bind your arbitration with the private sector?
Fair enough, but, but I've made my point.
Yeah, so I want to make sure I'm understanding sort of your, the grander achievement that we're trying to get to through possible reductions, because the overage that we have accounts for about 0.2 of a mil, and I just want to want to put that in perspective, because I'm, I'm, you know, as we look at what these, you know, what this budget, and by this, I don't mean just this budget, but really the full 96 million means for taxpayers, the average, you know, depending on what your home is worth, you know, most people will be paying between $1 and $300 more, and I'm concerned about that.
How much more?
Between $1 and $300.
Some quite a bit more.
Year over year.
Compared to, compared to last year. And I'm concerned about that, as I look at this portion, if we get to your 1.75 guidance, that would be about 20%, maybe about a quarter of a mil. So not insignificant, but it's not a huge impact on the pocketbook.
Okay, fair enough. I, I'm sorry.
I would just say, from my perspective, and based on what we did last year, I know Matt is a little bit more flexible, his budget, and they did a great job in the operating, they get to 175, and the Board of Selectmen has typically had a little bit more flexibility in the budget side. So if you aren't able to do the operating budget because you feel, and I totally understand your position, I would be open to, I don't know, the board, as we did last year, looking at cash for capital, because that has the, to Eric's point, has the same point in lowering the taxes. If you're thinking about the taxes, cash for capital is the same as an operating reduction, and Maria, if you had put the EDC and some of those other things, to Rob's point, in the operating budget, and, you know, you could cut those, that would, I would count those items towards that, and we have done that in the past, and I would be, you know, a little bit more flexible to look for cash for capital, because that has the same thing, the same impact on taxes as cutting the operating budget.
I would have just liked to have a more, a better conversation about this at the tri-board meeting, because to the extent that you know that contractual salary increases are going to account for 1.6, and we say 175, we should immediately be having those conversations as to why, Board of Selectmen, there's no way you're going to come in at that level.
So we did raise that, yeah.
We did show that. Rob didn't know, you guys did.
We did have that.
We knew that, we knew that that's where.
I guess we just. I thought that's one tiny little question, somebody mentioned a new librarian position. Can somebody talk about that?
Sure, so that's not a new position, that was a reclassification of the existing position.
Oh.
That was approved earlier this year, and the estimated cost that we provided to you is not just the salary, but that was also the estimated impact on payroll taxes and increased pension costs. So that was a full comprehensive cost associated with the reclassification of that position.
So somebody got a promotion.
It was actually a retiring employee who had been working at a grade for quite some time, but was not being compensated for that.
Oh, and was replaced.
Yeah, probably, it was an appropriately classified physician.
Last thing, just saying, what precedent are we setting if the Board of Education comes in perfectly at our guidance? And how has that worked traditionally? And to set new precedent possibly this year, what message are we sending and how do we deal with that going forward? I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but it's certainly something we have to address going forward.
Did we serve me correctly, we haven't issued guidance for two years.
So we've issued guidance, we haven't issued caps.
We've bound them.
And as are like both boards, it's, you know, they've been over.
All right, so, all right, so here's, here's where we are as a Board of Finance. I would say, we're asking for you to take a hard look at those items that are in your operating expense budget. I personally, and I think Lisa's on this page, would give you a $250,000 head start on that $525,000 that's cut by adding back the, doing the math off of the budget replenished, so you not only, you start with a higher base and you don't have to add the 127 in as, as that. I think that's, and, but I think we ask, you know, every budget has some room, we're asking you to take a critical look at that, and also take a look at the cash for capital items.
It's, I'd like to just say, like, I'd also be willing to, you know, the, Sean and I talked about the insurance and pension true-up, right? About the, the $700,000 for, right, $700,000 for Board of Ed, which would relieve about $165,000 for them and $35,000 for.
Yes, let's, let's spend a minute on that. You, you, so, this is the purview of the Board of Finance, which is, you know, how to allocate reserves. And there was quite a bit of discussion at, at two meetings, including the Board of Ed, about the Internal Service Fund that is used for both, all, all the employees in the town, both Board of Ed, correct? Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
That if we were to, and there was a talk about the money that was moved to OPEB, and we cannot pull that money back, and that that fund balance is low because of less favorable claims experience that we had over the years. That if the Board of Finance were to bolster that Internal Service Fund so that it had a bigger base, that the expense item that would be allocated could be reduced by about $200,000 in the aggregate across both boards. And so that would be based on just the size of the budgets and the number of employees be the numbers that, that Kevin mentioned, 165 and 35?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Alright, so if we talk a little bit more, we'll have the full 525 here for you before we.
I would ask, we're giving you sort of, I think, a directive that's not as specific as I would like it to be. You know, just asking you to go back and think hard. I, I want to know that we're asking you to reach a certain number or a certain percentage, and I don't know if you can translate that instantly, Sean, to say, okay, if we start with that higher base, given what Rob's just proposed, you know, what, what?
What's their number?
What's the number, then?
I, I just worked off of 21 million, and, and so, yeah, hang on, hang on.
I don't want to set you up to, you know, come back and then be told by us, well, that wasn't good enough.
Isn't it, isn't the number 21 million?
Yeah, but what I would, I think I heard two different pieces on the ambulance versus the town aid road. We were just talking about the town aid road being included in the base.
They're saying you get 250 credit.
That's what we took out last year, that you took out last year.
Rob, you gave them 250?
250. What's that?
You proposing a 250 credit that they don't have now?
Yes, go back, go back to the, the stair steps slide.
I think they needed to cut about 400,000.
Originally, it was like 525 to get down to 125.
So minus.
So I'm, I'm fine, yeah.
So that means you gotta cut 275.
Fine, 275, between the cash for capital and the.
And can you tell us, Sean, because I know that we set up this meeting now being later than it was intended to be, that process-wise, we are required today to forward a budget to a public hearing. And so should we be forwarding this budget? Or are we forwarding a budget that is $275,000 less than this? And that, that we're expecting the Board of Selectmen to come in and present a budget that is $275,000 less than this?
Well, typically, we run into this pretty much every year, as you said. And typically what we've done, I did consult with the town attorney to confirm. But, you know, the charter frankly is silent on what your options are at this point. Obviously, the Board of Selectmen has until technically this Saturday to meet the terms of the charter and do it presented. But, and the first hearing has to be really that following week. So I don't think the charter was really designed for a lot of back and forth in between. But again, the charter's not perfectly clear. Certainly, it is your budget, as it's been presented to you, to do with what you want. However, the notice for the public hearing to meet the five-day threshold for next Thursday has to be filed tomorrow. So we either have to decide what you'd like to be presented, or what we've typically done in other years, is say, the Board of Selectmen and Board of Ed budgets as presented, without an endorsement for or against, are being opened up to public comment. And then at that meeting following, anything can happen in between, but at the meeting following the hearing, in the same auditorium, further discussion and, and work that's to be.
And then we have time after that for the Board of Selectmen to come back.
As long as you want, right. What we've done before, sure. And what we've done before is, you know, again, schedule a second hearing if we need to meet that requirement. But typically, a lot of the back and forth and the cuts, the people who I think mostly recall, happen after the first public hearing. You have to have one, you can have as many as you want.
Thank you.
Sure. So if you want, I mean, if we're back to the number, I can, I can pull up on this.
Mil, mil rate?
I thought we were back to trying to.
So I just, we're gonna move them forward, right?
Yes.
What can we?
So, no, we, we gave around, we gave a number of.
275.
275.
So.
One, one thing before we go, I just want to make sure, Sean's mil rate worksheet incorporated the notion that we were going to contribute a million of reserves to lower the mil rate. And so the mil rate, if we don't do that, could be a bit higher. So I just want to.
I don't mind doing the mil, a billion to the reserves, and then another million for them to reduce our overall rate.
So that would then create a cliff for the following year.
So, no, the question is, when we, when we recommend these to public hearing, do we need to give an indicative mil rate?
No.
Need to give, the charter says that the notice that I provided to the town clerk, that will be advertised as being unfiled, will have summaries of expected expenditures and revenues with. But in that, we have included, right, it doesn't have to say the mil rate. But what it does have to say is, what are the sources of revenue by major source? And last year, when we had a revenue, again, it was a transfer from designated reserves, we showed that there, because otherwise, you need to calculate the balance to be raised by the levy. So I, I would need direction on whether you want that million-dollar use of reserves. You can change your mind after the hearings, or, but as we advertise it one way or the other, I would just need clarification.
So I would be in favor of including the million-dollar transfer.
I'm against that.
You're against, huh?
I am against that, because it creates the cliff the following year. It makes me very nervous. We're going to have to make that up the following year. We can always add it back.
Well.
Why do you have to make it up the following year?
Because we're going to be short revenue, a million, unless we do that every year. It's a revenue source.
But I don't think, I wasn't the sense, I didn't have the sense that we had to put a million dollars every year into the.
Well, you don't, but then you have to raise the taxes to cover what you don't have anymore.
But I thought it was just bolstering it, I mean.
Well, no. Gosh, we have this conversation just about every year, and sometimes more than once a year. We, we could not do that, Lisa, and tax the taxpayers that million dollars and end up with a million dollars more surplus.
Well, it wouldn't be surplus, you would just tax what you, what we're spending.
Well.
So it's not, you mean reserves.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of pulling the reserves down.
I think our, our reserves are, are, right now, projected to be over 14%. And so I think this is a good faith effort on the part of the Board of Finance relative to the contingency we did last year and didn't spend, that I'm okay with it.
So I, I appreciate that. It's just next year, we're going to be short a million dollars, so taxes are going to jump quite a bit higher.
We, we pushed them up last year, or the reserves up, so I understand, I understand your, your point. Thank you.
So, just remember that there was a time where every year we put a million into the operating budget, back before.
Into the Internal Service Fund?
Mm-hmm. We took reserves every year and contributed a million dollars. And it took a long time to wean ourselves off of that.
Alright, so let's be clear on what we're talking about here.
So I think we need to be very clear what we're doing.
There, the mil rate worksheet that generates the indicative mil rate has $1 million of fund balance undesigned. It's not for the Internal Service Fund.
Correct.
Did you want to designate it as such? Or just, I think we go with what we've got.
I would feel more comfortable designating it to the Internal Service Fund at this point, because we can still have time after the public hearing to go back and, and take the reserves down further and look at more cash for capital.
Or not contribute, we can decide at that point.
Doesn't create the hole in the operating.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I can live with that in terms of going forward. I'm not sure we need to fund the Internal Service Fund, because we came in at 28 on the town side. We were anticipating, last year we came in at 15, so percent.
But you give them some operating relief, though, correct?
It would, absolutely.
Right, so that's.
About 40,000, so you bring that up to 290.
But on Board of Ed side, too.
Right, but it will give, create them.
So I bring your budget in below the 175.
Right.
And so the combination of that actually gets the combined.
We're not saying go find.
Huh? What's that?
We're not saying go find something else to replace that with.
Will we give them credit for the, will we give the Board of Selectmen credit for the full 200, then?
What's that?
Would we be willing to give the Board of Selectmen credit for the full 200? I mean, I know it's technically the Board of, the Board of Ed is not contributing this. This is being contributed by the people of Simsbury through General Reserve.
That's for them.
I would say that, let's, yeah, I, we're willing to put a million dollars in the Internal Service Fund, and between the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen, you can determine how that's split. I'm okay with that.
Me, too.
I still want to bring them back with the 275 cut.
Yeah.
Well, if, if, if they get the full 200, if.
And they can count the 40,000.
Just, yeah, just to clarify on 200,000. What that is, is how much we can reduce the town's share of the allocation rate, the insurance premium that we charge ourselves. So just as if we were fully insured, and Anthem said, you know what, your, your rate, say, your rate was going to be 8% next year, higher. If we move that million dollars, it would instead be 6% higher. Because we have more flexibility to handle a really bad claim year. So in terms of splitting or crediting Board of Ed, we would have no choice but to plug in my operating budget at $40,000 less than 200,000, there is $60,000. But in terms of how we're sort of sharing that credit, I don't.
I think that's the way we should, we should treat it. So that's $40,000 against the 275.
But, but to the extent Matt has then reduced his budget gratefully, thank you for doing that. And we're still, if, if you're thinking about taxes, the taxes have come down because of the move the Board of Finance has set. So do we still expect the Board of Selectmen to reduce taxes even more by cutting more than that?
I do, because the guidance was 175, and we've already now raised it above that for, for them. And so, I mean, once we average it all out across the two, it'll, it still will be above 1.75, in all likelihood.
What, what was the basis of, how did you pick 175?
Well, you have to ask Rob.
Extremely scientific.
So I would just ask for some flexibility there, because we know what the hard costs are. I, to Rob's point, I get, they were negotiated costs, so you can't say that you had no control over them, but.
Just Matt has a question.
Not to further complicate the conversation, but the, the other piece we talked about in our operating presentation, to think in the collective hall of, you know, tax rate reserve levels is the non-lapsing fund. So we're projected to have 300, I mean, our year is not over, but a surplus of $300,000 in that fund. That's the purview of the Board of Finance in collaboration with the Board of Ed. To think about those dollars in the overall question.
Believe me, we have.
That's fine, we haven't gotten any feedback on that.
No, I don't, but I, but I think.
You know, I put that there as well.
Yeah, thank you.
That hasn't been used as an offset, like we had in prior years.
I think part of a million that would go into the internal, as far as I'm concerned, that, that would be part of it.
As far as the guidance on capital, have you all determined a number you're looking to get to so that we know where we need to be, or, because we've, we've already said that these are our priorities.
So in terms of the seven or the 6.7 line, are you saying?
Or 6.4, or 6.2, or 6.1, or?
And we were talking, because we.
We're 6.4 through the proposed fiscal 19 year.
So the question is, when, how are we going to step it up? Remember, there was the cliff, and I heard from you guys, but not everyone heard that. You were going to step it up over two years. So if it's 6.7, step up, to get to 6.7, the step up is a little different than if it's a seven, step up. And Sean, could you walk us through that? The difference between the seven and the 6.7? And if you split, you could do it any way. You could step it up three quarters of the way this year, and then a quarter next year, or half and half. I mean, those were the discussions that I think you guys mentioned that you wanted to have. So I'm sort of straddling two boards, trying to understand what you guys said, and so I'm hoping to hear what you can.
Alright, so what I think, I think what you're getting at here, if we wanted, it, sort of, it depends on whether you want to go all the way up to 7% in future years, or 6.7, in terms of calculating that. I have done this graph at the 6.7 line. Again, so we're 6.4, either way, we're closing 6.4% for fiscal 19. Though everything else is a projection, but this line now drops to 6.7. As you'll see, there's obviously less cash for capital generated, which means we are bonding a little more. But also, the cap is lower, so if we then exceed, we're projecting a 2024 budget would be at a little bit above 7%, 6.7%. And so, but I think to Lisa's question.
It's the 6.4% cash to capital. We're trying to get either to 6.7 or 7. So you don't have to spend the full 6.4, you could do it over time in two tranches. And that's the question I didn't, and I think that Sean's saying, there wasn't a lot of clarity for.
Yeah, where do you want to be?
Right. Are you comfortable with 6.4 on our way to 6.7, or are you looking for, are we, I guess, I'm, are we looking for 6.3? Are we looking for, because, you know, cash for capital is always where the play is. And how, and what, to Eric's point, you know, what's the real impact? Is it worth doing those cuts now? I mean, we do want to get back up to 6.7. The problem with the dip, as we saw, is it creates a cliff, which is why I'm so concerned about the million dollar one, and how hard it is to climb out of a cliff once you have it. So the question is, I think that Sean is asking, rightfully so, is 6.4 his number for this year in cash for capital? Are we expecting less? Or are we going to credit if they can't meet the operating costs, and they lower that from 6.4 to, I don't know, take 200 out of there? What does that bring them to, if they take 200 out of 6.4 in cash for capital?
Yeah, roughly 6.2.
6.2, so that would bring them to 6.2, but then to get to 6.7, you got to do a 0.5 increase, so.
What's uncomfortable about this discussion for me is that we've got 176,500 that's sort of in never, never land.
Right.
That's cash for capital, it's not CNR, it could have been split, split out. We have questions about things that are on the capital or CNR list that might actually be operating expenses. I mean, I think this all has to, when you talk about cliffs and, and, you know, climbing out of a hole, I think this has got to be fixed in this, before we sit here again next year and do this.
I agree.
So I think what, what, I, I, it, it seems simplistic to say it, but we're asking for you to look for some specific cuts in the operating budget for 2018 that you put up, that you sent to us. And we've asked you to prioritize the capital. We will take a good look at that and decide, and you did that, right?
We didn't, because we were at the 6.4 number, which was below the previous number. So, again, this is our capital priorities for the year, based on what we thought that the number was going to be. And again, we looked at the priorities before we looked at the number, and we ended up below 7. But it's your decision on where you want to be on capital, but we're telling you that these are our capital priorities.
So I'd say, there are two capitals. There's things that we bond for, and then there's cash for capital.
None of our recommendations are being bonded. It's all cash. You're not asking for bonds for any of our projects.
So cash for capital, then, as opposed to bonding, impacts the taxes everyone pays, almost like an operating line item. Because if you cut the cash for capital, it's the same as cutting a line item in the operating budget, because you're not bonding, it's not a portion of it.
Correct.
So to the extent we're asking you to prioritize capital, it's mostly cash for capital. It may be in the out years, I don't know. I'm less worried, to Rob's point, that changes over time, and it's a guy, and it should be a bright line in the out years, the 2025, unless.
I think we'll get more clarity. I don't think the total amount of money we spend will change much by where we put it in, in categorizing it. But we'll spend less time talking about whether it is or isn't capital, or is or isn't CNR. But the projects have to be done, and studies have to be done.
Unless they're, unless, you know, what I heard from this board is, we want to see less stuff, whether it's in operating or cash to capital, to get the number closer to 175.
By, by the questions we asked tonight, we identified areas that we have concerns about. The ambulance, clearly. Social worker, we're asking the why and wherefore.
The EDC study.
The what?
The economic development.
Economic development study, you know, is, we, we accepted, but questioned the, the total amount of road expense. I mean, it's a big number. the, the total amount of, uh, road expense, I mean, it's a big number. Like, you know, we, we cut that dramatically last year, uh, when, because we needed to find dramatic cuts, and so to go all the way back up to where we were before, is that the right number? That's what we're asking you to go back and say, somewhere in there, there's two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars of things that you might be able to not have in this year's budget.
And there's a couple tiny things, I mean, that weren't, weren't worth bringing up, like that we're new.
But it doesn't have to be the service cuts that Maria identified at the request of the Board of Selectmen, it could be cash to capital, is my opinion.
There's an understanding that, right, based on, even with the different base, if some of those items are actually affecting the debt service and capital appropriation.
Right.
Still impacting the mill rate, lowering the mill rate, so that the Board of Selectmen budget wouldn't necessarily be at one-seven-five or even two-point-five.
But you would have the equivalent reduction, because you've reduced cash for capital, which are technically a Board of Selectmen, we never put it as a Board of Selectmen's budget, but if we did, that would actually lower your, and it is, most, Maria, would you say most towns do include it as part of the Board of Selectmen budget?
Correct, I, I would say what we're doing here is maybe more unusual.
Unique, right. So that's why I'm more willing to give credit, because in every other town, you would get credit for that.
We can, we can certainly go back and look, but to Rob's point, we're gonna need to buy this stuff out at some point, whether it's this year or next year, it's, it's there, so, we can, we can look at that stuff, but we gotta buy plows, we gotta...
But the economic development study might be something you'd want to...
Maybe we can save you sixty grand, but, yeah, maybe, but, okay.
It all adds up.
It does.
All right, so, so my question then would be to the Board of Selectmen, would you prefer to have a special meeting for yourselves and change your budget before the hearing, or present the budget you've given us with, and we can certainly let the, the taxpayers know that, I mean, there, there are three presentations at the public hearing, Board of Finance, Board of Ed, four, actually.
Four, yeah.
The, the Board of Selectmen, and then the capital. And so, if, if we go with this budget that you've given us, then there'll be a preamble by me when I present it, that we've, we had asked for one-seventy-five, and that we've asked the Board of Selectmen, and then we'll have a, a robust discussion from the taxpayers, probably about that, and then we, as a board, will act based on, uh, our analysis of the budget and what we hear from the, from the taxpayers at public hearing.
I would, I would, to your credit, I'd also like to hear the priorities of the board, you know, that would be helpful if you're able to do that, as, if there are cuts that you, 'cause obviously, we can prioritize for it, but it would be better if you did that.
I don't think it's...
It's not our job to prioritize.
It's their job to prioritize.
No, I think what Rob is saying, if you just have it on the day of the hearing, so you could actually schedule a meeting an hour before the hearing, and do the priorities then, if you even wanted to, but if you could do a special meeting, I think that would be helpful.
We wanna, you know, so just going out a little further, past a week from Thursday, after the public hearing, let's be clear on what happens after that. So the public hearing will be closed, there will be a Board of Finance meeting, in which we will talk about what we heard and what we wanna do next, uh, we could, you know, at that point, say, "We need you to cut this budget to this," and then we don't have an approved Board of Selectmen budget, you'd have to go get that approved, in which case we would have to hold another Board of Finance meeting to approve your approved budget and have a public hearing.
Right, just, right, that, depending on the, depending on how rapidly you could do all of that, the only rule in the Charter is that if you don't take action on the budgets as presented at the hearing, within ten days, they become adopted as presented. So you could, you know...
My goal is, stated goal has been to, to not end up where we did the last two years, which is waiting all the way till June for a referendum on information that we pretty much have our arms around, at least this year. So I'd like to get to the point where we recommend to the taxpayers at referendum, the board, the, our, our approval of your approved budgets, all right? And probably not likely we can do that on Thursday night next week, but we would wanna do it shortly thereafter. To the extent that you could come back with something constructive before that meeting, or announce it at that meeting, then it might still be possible to do it either that night or within the ten-day window without having to reopen the public hearing. Reopening the public hearing is not the end of the world, but it has to be noticed, it, there's a lot of stuff that goes with that.
Rob, just in a timing schedule, Sean, if we did delay the hearing, when would the referendum be, because you start getting into...
Our, our adopted calendar for the Board of Finance, I just pulled up here, included an assumption, we may do a second hearing on April twenty-fourth, and it says we have to do that, but that, you know, because so many of these are contingent on whatever your last meeting or hearing was, some of that is more of a guideline, but, um, under that plan, we were gonna have a second hearing or hearing continuation on April twenty-fourth, and that would trigger a Tuesday, May fifteenth.
Okay, so that doesn't change the, the plan, only if we did a third hearing.
I'd have to look closely at a calendar to make sure holidays went up, but theoretically, if you were a week earlier than that, you could be a week earlier than that, but you're not into June, early to mid-May.
Good. Thank you very much for the constructive conversation.
Oh, do we, don't we have to make a motion to put it in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we do have to, yeah.
I scratched my mouth.
Linda.
I thought he was looking for a motion.
No, not yet. I am, but not that one, yet, although we have slopped over the eight o'clock hour very, very...
So I'll make a motion to accept and forward the board, the proposed twenty-eighteen, twenty-nine operating and capital budgets, um, as presented by the Board of Selectmen.
All three, all three budgets.
Friendly, friendly amendment to add the one million towards the Internal Service Fund, don't we have to notice that?
Yeah, that would, um...
If that's your intention, which I think is...
Well, I'm going to the operating budget, so we're gonna show up there. Add the friendly amendment if it shows up in the...
What, is, does it, is it more like, well, it'd be an operating reduction, right, and a revenue.
Well, there are other assumptions that go into that, but...
Right. I mean, how do you recommend we do it?
Because otherwise...
But that's a decision that we can make as a board after the public hearing, so I don't think it has to be as part of the amendment.
We're recommending that the budget, the, these, all three budgets be forwarded, moved, moved to public hearing to be held next Thursday, six o'clock at the Heisman Conference. That's your motion, Kevin?
That's my motion.
A second?
A question.
Yes.
So that, in doing this, we are presuming that there's a million being used in reserves as we forward it, or no?
So, I, at this point, I would not, because what you'll have to do is, you would also have to take an action to reduce the Board of Ed's budget by a hundred and sixty thousand.
No, no, I mean, in the original assumption, assuming we don't do that, we're not reducing anyone's budget to put it forward.
Right, so unrelated to the Internal Service Fund, are you, that was the original question, are you including the million?
No, I think we've just given them an indication that we're willing to help with some type of operating budget relief.
So separate from that issue, the, the original one we brought up, about the million dollars that we had had on the original mill rate.
Right, okay, so that's...
It's really, the question is, that...
Is that being foreign?
Are this million dollars right here that we've talked about over the last few months, possibly using to affect the mill rate, I do need to know whether that million dollars is gonna be included as a revenue transfer or not.
So I would not, but I know you guys are more comfortable with it.
Who would include that?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it, because we could designate it as a million dollars to the fund later.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
To the Internal Service Fund, correct?
Afterwards, direct where that goes, correct?
You can, right, but what we're publicly, what you're publishing, the town group will have, that people can come and inspect, does calculate the tax levy, so whether the million dollars is included or not, you're gonna swing the tax levy right away.
To go over just to the right a little bit, because that leaves us with a fund balance projected at fourteen-point-two percent. So if you take, can you just zero out that million and see what it would be with that?
Well, if you take that out, then the mill rate goes...
Fifteen-point-three, no, I'm looking at the reserve percentage.
Reserves become...
Yeah, okay, fifteen, fifteen, and the real rate, the mill rate...
Our mill rate goes up about one-point-seven, one-point-one percent, or whatever.
But if we did the transfer, which I think everyone is saying they wanna do, it wouldn't, it's really only a reduction of two-hundred thousand, as opposed to a million, right? You're using reserves...
The Internal Service Fund?
This is a mistake I made this afternoon.
Right, it's not dollars.
So my concern is that, I mean, I, you know, you guys can do it, I'm not gonna get mad at you, but I can't support that, because, because to me, that's, I mean, we're not really, it's gonna be a bigger impact if we put it in, use the Internal Service Fund, so for me, it's less transparent than what our intent is, not that that's bad, I mean, I, this is so complicated, I get it, and I'm a hundred percent okay with, if you wanna do that, but I can't support that right now, but I do understand the intent, and I think you guys are all rational, and...
So the question is, do we have to, if we're gonna use reserves to affect the mill rate, do we have to include it in?
It would be good to know.
Okay, so then, so...
Do you want to use the million dollars?
So, so, yes.
I'm in favor of using a million dollars of fund balance to, uh, reduce the mill rate, personally, as we've discussed since pretty much November.
Right.
My objection was, I wouldn't do that unless it went to the Internal Service Fund.
But then you don't get the million dollar against...
I would be, so, so Linda, I would be, actually, I mean, listen, I would be actually fine with a million going to both the internal and to affect the mill rate, 'cause that would bring our reserves...
No, I'm fine.
Yeah, so it would bring, it would bring our reserves down to thirteen-point-eight versus they're at fifteen and a half, so...
And then next year, we have a cliff to climb out of, that's my concern.
I, we taxed last year, we overtaxed last year to, to affect the reserves this year.
Reasonable people can reasonably disagree, I don't think you're a bad person for that.
Right. That's well above our historical percentage of reserve.
And I'm still afraid that if we don't get it down, the state will take them.
Yep.
So the other thing I...
I'll let you use it.
That we were not privy to, but Maria pointed out, and that I have read as well, is that Moody's and S&amp;P are recommending a fifteen percent reserve, and in part, because of the fiscal instability at the state, so we don't have normal, so that is now the recommendations of the ratings, and Maria, will you speak to that?
Sure, sure, so, I was back in Mansfield this fall, because of our heavy reliance on state aid, we were one of the twenty, I think it was twenty-nine or so communities in Connecticut that were flagged essentially for a review of Moody's because of the state's financial crisis, and during that review process, the Moody's folks did indicate to us that they anticipated taking a more favorable position, and that they would like to see Connecticut municipalities closer to national trends, and they would most likely like to see us start moving in the direction of being closer to fifteen to seventeen percent, that historically, they had, for Connecticut municipalities, always had a much lower expectation, but that they didn't anticipate moving in the direction closer to fifteen or seventeen percent.
Which is why I'm comfortable with the fifteen percent, but I totally, like I said, reasonable people can reasonably disagree, and I'm okay with that.
Certainly, the governor can act outside the recommendations of Moody's.
Absolutely.
So, I'm gonna, so, do we need to, we'll include the million dollars to pull the reserves down, or, pull the mill rate down, as included as the notice?
All right, so just a couple of other items before we adjourn, which would be...
We should vote.
No, no, seriously, will be topics of Thursday night's discussion, is that the car tax has changed, we didn't talk about that, but whatever the mill rate is for the property, uh, will be the mill rate for the cars, so the, we lost the payback from the state, and the taxpayers will pay a little bit more. And then the second thing that needs to be certainly discussed and presented is the impact of the revaluation, and you should know that in this worksheet, Sean has increased the, um, reserve or clawback, if you will, on, for appeals. We originally had one and a half, or, one-point-seven, and now we have like five million dollars that we're putting up there, based solely on the volume of, of appeals that were made,